Watchful care reaches from end to end. It orders all things in such power that even the tensions and tragedies of sin cannot frustrate your loving plan. Help us to embrace you, embrace your will, and give us the strength to follow your call. Please keep the men and women serving this nation in all capacities in your protection.
Amen. Thank you, Councilman Stip. All right, we need a motion, please, and a second to excuse Councilman Osborne from the council meeting this evening. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
I heard a motion from Councilman Stip and a second from Councilman Campbell. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. So we'll go down to communications, and we do not have any communications tonight. Do we have any citizens, now is the time for any citizens to address the city council? All right, well, we'll go right on to the consent agenda. Will the city clerk please read consent agenda items 6.1 to 6.3 by title only?
Item 6.1, approve draft minutes from a special meeting held on August 27, 2014. Item 6.2, adopt resolution number 14-1663 approving the intergovernmental agreement between the cities, towns, fire districts, and governmental jurisdictions to provide for automatic assistance for fires and other types of emergency incidents and authorize the city manager or designate to execute any and all documents necessary for the administration of the IGA. Item 6.3, number one, adopt resolution number 14-1665 declaring as a public record that certain document filed with the city clerk titled "Renumbering and Reorganization of Article 13-3 Parking" of Chapter 13 of the Goodyear City Code, providing severability and an emergency clause. Item number two, adopt ordinance number 14-1312 amending the Goodyear City Code by replacing Article 13-3 Parking of Chapter 13 of the Goodyear City Code in its entirety, providing for severability and an emergency clause.
Thank you. Does anyone from the public wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? Does anyone on the council wish to remove an item from the consent agenda?
May I have a question?
Yes.
6.2.
All right, 6.2, okay. And your question is, could we have someone come up on 6.2? Thank you, Mr. Luizzi.
Evening, Mayor and Council.
Chief, I hate to ask questions that I already know the answer to, but just to make kind of everyone aware, is this automatic aid agreement, is there ever any management component to this, or is this all the local fire chiefs that get together and come up with these? AMWA, for example, we have a management board that the city managers all meet and they agree, or they all work together on a management component, and then it goes to the overall board? Is there a city manager component to this automatic aid?
No, there is not. The fire chiefs from all the representing agencies meet on a quarterly basis as part of the Life Safety Council or the Board effectively and make decisions on policies and procedures.
So the changes that we're going to vote on tonight are done without any city management influence, is that correct?
Through the fire chiefs, we make the city management aware of any changes to the automatic aid agreement, staffing, et cetera, and also the costs that go into the automatic aid agreement for dispatching every year is informed through the city management before the budget process.
Thanks.
Satisfied, Bill, with your question answered? All right. Anyone else on the council? All right, then, could I please have a motion a second to approve the consent agenda items 6.1 to 6.3?
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Councilman Holman and a second by Councilman Campbell. Open for, oh, let's roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
Passed a 6-0.
Great, all right, let's go on to business. And the first one is 7.1. This is a public hearing to consider the approval of a text amendment to a portion of Article 3-4-3 Industrial District Standards of the City of Goodyear zoning ordinance as amended to increase maximum allowed building height in the light industrial III zoning district from 40 feet to 50 feet and other related changes. Going to open the public meeting. Karen Craver, Planner 3, 2 percent. Oh.
Mayor, if I may introduce-
I didn't look up while I was reading this.
Derek Cornet is the interim Deputy Services Director. Was going to introduce him next Monday evening when we're bringing on the new city engineer as well. However, this case came up tonight, so I didn't have an opportunity to introduce Derek before. So here he is, and he will be part of this item tonight.
What is Derek's title again?
Interim Deputy Service Director.
Deputy Service Director?
Oh, excuse me, interim development service director.
Thank you.
Thank you for clarifying that, yes.
I thought I got into the motions now.
Well, welcome, Derek.
Thank you very much, Mayor Lord, members of the city council. On this item tonight, Karen Craver, our Planner 3, who did a lot of work on this item, will be presenting. And then after that, Mr. Schmitz, Karen and I will be available to answer questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Derek. Good evening, Mayor and Council. This proposed amendment to increase the maximum building height in the I-1 district is staff-initiated. We are proposing the increase in height from 40 feet to 50 feet because we are routinely finding that the establishment of industrial businesses that we really want to have here in the city is hindered by the 40-foot height limitation. Part of the issue for the businesses is how our zoning ordinance defines maximum building height and how it is measured. Building height in the city is measured from the top of the curb of the adjacent public street on which the site is located to the top of the roof of the building. So typically, as defined in the zoning ordinance, every inch of a building from the bottom of the slab that's poured on the site to the top of the roof is counted within that 40 feet. But the clear story, which is the usable space within the building from the floor to the ceiling of the building, and what is needed for the businesses to operate, is far less than that 40 feet. So rather than asking individual industrial properties to come in for PAD amendments all the time to increase the allowed building height from 40 feet, we thought that a text amendment would be the best way to expand the development potential for all I-1 properties in the city. Naturally, staff has recommended approval of our staff-initiated amendment, and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval as well by a unanimous vote.
Thank you.
With that, if you have any questions, we're all here.
Appreciate that. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Would anybody in the audience like to speak? All right, then, I'm going to close the public hearing.
Somebody just-
Oh, somebody did. I missed it. Please come forth.
Good evening, Mayor, members of city council. My name is John Lass, L-A-S-S. I'm with Centerpoint Properties, and I'm working with Michael Lewis Company on a project, a prospective project here in the city of Goodyear. I wanted to just come up, and thank you very much for considering this text amendment to allow for the higher roof heights in the I-1 district. And thank you too to the city staff, specifically Karen, for all her hard work in preparing the proposal and the presentation. Goodyear has shown itself to be very business-friendly, and I believe that this amendment is further evidence of this. I further believe that this change will be a positive driver for growth in the city. My client, Michael Lewis Company, is looking forward to the prospect of locating here in the city. The higher building height will allow for much more efficient storage in the warehouse. What had been leftover space can now be used more effectively to store additional pallets of product. I hope that you will consider supporting this proposed text amendment. I look forward to working with you and your team on this exciting project. Thank you again for your time. I'm here if there are any questions specific to the project, as well as a member from Michael Lewis management staff. Thank you again.
Thank you very much for your comments, and I apologize for not seeing your hand raised. All right. With that, I'm going to close the public hearing. And will the city clerk please read ordinance 14-1311 by title only, please?
Adopt ordinance number 14-1311 amending Article 3-4-3 Industrial District Standards of the zoning ordinance as amended to increase the maximum allowed building height in the light industrial zoning district from 40 feet to 50 feet and other related changes, providing for corrections, severability, and effective date and penalties.
Thank you. Could I please have a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion by Councilman Loretano and a second by Councilman Stip. Open for council discussion. Vice Mayor Pizzillo?
General question. We have Luke and we have our Goodyear Phoenix Airport. Are there any plots of land within the city that could be a safety issue from going to 40 to 50?
Mayor, if I may, Vice Mayor Pizzillo, one of the things that we incorporated into this amendment was a requirement for any buildings going over the 40 feet to submit to the FFA a notice of proposed construction, and they would have to receive back from the FAA a determination of no hazard for air transportation. And we've done that to ensure that any properties developing around the airport would be proven to be of no hazard. And the Michael Lewis Companies, in fact, have already received that determination from the FAA.
So they've already gone through that process, and that's not an issue?
They have.
Okay. Thank you.
And just to add on to that, they verify that with Luke Air Force Base, right? There is conversation between Luke and-
Yes, all of our development applications are routed through Luke Air Force Base as well.
Great. Councilman Stip?
Karen, I've got more of a generic question regarding the staff initiation. When staff recognizes that there's a problem and they're able to initiate a change, does it go through the same type of process that a client initiated change would? Same hearing schedules, the same staff review, or is it expedited or moved through in a different pace?
Mayor, if I may, Councilman Stip, it goes through basically the same process. Staff works together on the language, drawing up the language. We have to do legal notifications, the same as we would with a private developer coming in for rezoning. And in fact, in this case, we had to do a little more because it's changing the building height more than 10% within an entire zoning district. So there were display ads that had to go in the paper for both the P&amp;Z meeting and the city council. I'd say the one thing that we don't do is our normal citizen review meeting because there isn't one specific site to be evaluated.
But essentially, it's the same. And is a staff-initiated change, is that something that we could do for not just a zoning ordinance, but can we do that for other things that have been, you know, stipulations that have been put on, building projects, et cetera? Do we have that kind of flexibility?
I think that probably most stipulation changes would be requested by the applicant, and we would take them through an evaluation process and bring them back to you and to the P&amp;Z first. I'm not sure that we would initiate that change ourselves.
Stick around for later, then.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, I think the big thing, as I will add to that, is transparency and informing residents within so many feet of many of these changes that might be detrimental or an additional look for them. So just my comments. Any other? Councilman Campbell?
Well, I appreciate the staff initiating this. I'm sad to see that we've had this on the books since 1999, and it's taken us almost 15 years to change the height of these buildings. And I hope we haven't lost a lot of businesses and developments coming in here to Goodyear because we had the lowest height requirement of any of the cities around us. And I would hope that since somebody on staff initiated this, I would hope that we would be proactive and possibly initiate other pro-development, whatever else that's old and dilapidated on the books that is stopping us from growing. I'm just surprised that it took us this long to raise the limit.
Well, I will-
I'm glad we did, but I'm just surprised.
I will add, since I've been on since 2005, it became a necessity. In the beginning, it wasn't. They didn't need as high of ceiling heights. And later, as the market changed and as the manufacturers changed, is that right? And that changed it. Because we had this discussion back at the city center in our committee, if you remember, when we did the height. And I'm not sure, what is the heights in the middle of the city center now? Eight floors, is it? It's been a long time, but I think it's eight floors. You can't imagine what that took. But I think the need all of a sudden really appeared, and especially during the downturn when you're trying to sell empty buildings.
Right, yeah.
And people came in, and it wasn't the ceiling height. So I appreciate you bringing this forth. Any other questions? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pizzillo?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
Passed a 6-0.
All right, 7.2, the public hearing, has been canceled related to Sun DS Farms' final pad amendment. It has been removed from tonight's agenda, and we'll now move on to 7.3, okay? That's request to approve a contract with Felix Construction, Inc. for filtration system improvements to the City of Goodyear 157th Avenue Water Reclamation Facilities. Brad Richards, project manager, to present.
Good evening, Mayor Lord, council members. We're pleased to bring you the recommendation for approval for this construction contract for the Package 7 filtration system improvements.
Could you speak up just a little bit, please? There you go. That's it.
Is that a little better?
It's better.
For Felix Construction Company. A little background for this project, it's a multi-phase effort. We did an evaluation back in 2012 where we assessed the condition and identified issues associated with the process. The processes at the plant and the equipment. We determined the improvements would be required to obtain a capacity of 6 million gallons a day. From those findings, we know that the capacity of the plant is six, I'm sorry, is 4 MGD. And in 2013, we hit a statutory agency design trigger at 3.2 million gallons a day. We project that in 2016, we'll also trigger the 90% design capacity, and this triggers the construction phase. We'll need to move to 6 MGD. This graphic here shows the flows in terms of time. The green arrow indicates when we'll hit the design trigger, which you can see happened in 2013 for the current plant capacity. And where we anticipate, we're going to be hitting the design capacity trigger for construction in 2016. And we can see how this projects forward in 2021 and 2023, where we anticipate to hit the same type of triggers. And that'll come into play later as we explain why that's an important feature to this project. Our objective, of course, is always to maintain the wastewater treatment for existing customers needing to accommodate our residential and our commercial development and provide the Class A-plus reclaimed water that we currently produce for the Goodyear Ballpark Irrigation System, the SAT site, which is, you know, is recharge for the upcoming Vado Zone Well Recharge System project, as well as other future uses that are currently being evaluated by staff. Now, the filtration system improvements have been set up to support the cost-effective phase, phase future capacity expansions, including 4 to 6 and beyond. This is just a quick graphic. It identifies our location just north of the Hela River, as well as some of the customers that we service, City of Goodyear, residential, commercial, some of our city facilities that produce water, Liberty Utility Service System, Partial Epcore, and the Perryville State Prison. Our project approach was to incorporate this particular project to allow for 6 MGD filtration capacity. This particular effort is being done a little bit in advance of the larger 2 MGD expansion from 4 to 6. From the graphic, we can see the red for some context on site. And this tells you where the filtration system improvements are. The green shading indicates items that are going to be addressed from 4 to 6 MGD and how we're incorporating all this work so that when we get to 11 and 16 MGD, which is the build-out of the plant site in the future. Again, just for context, we're using a modular approach. Each of these filter units come in what you see there, and then the, what they call a circular disc assembly, which is kind of the pie-shaped circular filters can be added and decreased to increase expansion as we move forward. The project delivery that was selected for this job in terms of construction was a job order contract, and we went with this particular approach for competitive procurement pricing. We wanted to get a qualifications-based selection of a contractor with a good work history, with City of Goodyear specifically, due to the importance of the project. Schedule is critical due to the other projects that this particular filtration system is going to serve. There was an opportunity for value engineering and constructibility reviews prior to final design approval. And we also liked the fact that we had open book pricing, which allowed us to review unit costs and exactly what they were pricing and how much everything was going to cost, as well as review multiple price proposals from vendors and equipment suppliers. In terms of project funding, this particular project was funded in 2015 CIP. We have a $2 million construction budget for this project. We negotiated a price of Felix Construction Company, the 1.7 million, as you see there, which is approximately $269,000 below our approved CIP budget. At the current time, this particular project is not encumbered. The additional funds would be used to allocate for additional services and/or contingency required during construction. A recommendation, we'd like to authorize the city, have you authorize the city manager to approve the construction contract with Felix, as well as authorize a purchase order for Felix Construction Company in the amount of 1.731 million. You have any questions?
Thank you very much. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Would anybody in the audience like to speak? Just to really look around this time. Okay. Can I please have a motion in a second to approve 1,731,091 on 6 cents contract for the construction contract with Felix Construction Company, Inc. for filtration system improvement to the City of Goodyear's 157th Avenue Water Reclamations Facility and authorize the purchase order to be issued? Do I hear a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion by Councilman Stip and a second by Councilman Campbell. Open for council discussion. Councilman Campbell?
I have a simple question. If this is approved, how long does it take to start construction, and how long does it take to complete construction? What are you looking, timeframe?
In terms of start, we'll be able to deliver a contract to Felix this week, once approved. And we're looking to finish by May of next year.
May of '15?
Yes.
So the construction would start?
This month, this week.
Soon, this month, okay.
Any other questions? Is this okay? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Thank you very much. We'll go on to 7.4, and it's to consider approving an order of 7,229 acre-feet of water from the Central Arizona Project for calendar year 2015. And of course, Mark Holmes, Water Resource Manager, to present.
Thank you, Mayor Lord, members of the council. Just waiting for the presentation, there we go. It is that time of the year again for our annual CAP water order. Tonight's recommendation is to approve a water order of 7,229 acre-feet for the city for calendar year 2015. Funding for this water order consists of, it will be a total of $1.2 million, provided through fiscal year 1415 financial water model and the unbudgeted but approved January 2015 water user fee. That was the interim rate that you approved a few months back. If you recall the work session we had, originally, we had one in October of 2012. We talked about ordering CAP water and what that would do to enhance our long-term storage credit bank account. And just wanted to show you this graph here. In 2012, we made a water order of 1,825 acre-feet. That was the initial amount we initially ordered. The cost for that was $137 per acre foot for a total of $250,000. And in 2014, we went ahead and doubled that order, at a cost of $600,000, and it was $154 per acre foot. So you can see, one of the things I did want to show you was the amount of the water commodity costs are going up every year, and it was substantial. And our proposal this evening is for 2015, again, doubling our water order for 7,229 acre-feet at a cost of $166 per acre foot, total of $1.2 million. And I just wanted to show you this slide. I presented this several times to you. It kind of shows you, this graph represents two pieces of information. The blue area is represented by the numbers in the left-hand side of the vertical axis. That's in acre-feet. That's our long-term storage credit bank account, our water bank. The red line is represented by the numbers on the right-hand vertical axis. That is our current and projected total water demands for our service area.
Can I interrupt?
Yes, ma'am, Mayor.
Just to ask you a question, do we, and I'm sure you've told us this, but is the normal water usage per household, has that been continually increasing, or have we leveled that off, or do?
Actually, it's decreasing, and it's decreasing ever so slightly. And the reason for that is through a number of mechanisms. One is continuous retrofitting of fixtures within the home is one that has occurred from older housing stock going out, whether the recession has caused folks to reevaluate if they were going to sell their home. They went out and updated, usually it's the kitchen or the fixtures within the home. Second is the home irrigation landscape checkups. A lot of folks have been calling the city and looking, coming and participating in classes, also getting information on our website about how to reduce their outdoor water use. As we had discussed, 60% of our total water demands for residential is consumed outdoors. And so a lot of folks have put good work into trying to reduce their outdoor water use, either through turf reduction or turf removal or plant replacement. So through time, we're going to see continued increase efficiency in residential dwellings, and it is ever so slightly coming down.
And are we, do we have any programs promoting individual efficiency, i.e., example, a very practical example, turn on the faucet and rinse out a glass because you're not going to put it in the dishwasher, and you've got the faucet on and running and rinsing that glass and rinsing that glass? Probably could have done an entire dishwasher process for that amount. Do we, have we done any education on, within the household, usage of water?
Yes, we have several programs that look both indoors and outdoors, from a simple fixture, how to analyze how much water your fixture is putting out, looking at providing aeration devices to provide more air in the water, reduce the flow in certain fixtures that might be older. Primary water conservation method, again, is outdoor water use.
Normally, equipment, not personal usage, not personal discipline.
Correct.
On the amount of water. That's all I was getting at.
Absolutely, and same with, can go, the list can go on, like home water heaters. How much time does it take when you turn on your hot water until the actual hot water gets to that fixture? And trying to increase those, decrease the time so you have hot water instantaneously at your fixtures. So a lot of information we do provide, and we have a lot of classes. In fact- In fact, we're going to have some articles coming out in the various newspapers, getting ready for our classes for various home conservation improvements, and how each consumer can reduce their water usage and their water bill.
Thank you.
Thank you. Again, this is, this graph is showing two pieces of information. We are right on target for the red line, looking at our historic total water demand and what we're projecting for the future. And by the method of which we have, in 2013, started out with a small quantity of a little over 1,800 acre-feet, and doubled that through time, you can see that we're slowing the decrease of using our long-term storage credit bank account. And if you look on the graph, you'll see in the year on the bottom horizontal axis, that in 2015, we'll actually hit the bottom of that valley. And going then forward, if we continue to then now order up to our total water demand going forward, we're actually going to increase our long-term storage credit bank account. And again, the bank account is the, where we make deposits when we order our CAP water, and it's recharged into the CAP recharge facilities because we cannot currently take direct delivery of CAP water. Also, this is the bank account where we put our reclaimed water that we're recharging currently at the SAT site, and then future at the Vados Injection Well Project. And again, the importance of this is every acre-foot that we pump, we have to replenish. And that's what I'll get to. But this shows you the health of our long-term storage credit bank account, and the yellow dash line shows you if we were not ordering CAP water, what that trajectory of our bank account would do. And you can see that may be out in 2021, 2022. If we weren't ordering CAP water, we would be depleting our bank account. So I just wanted to show you that trend line there. Again, the benefits to the city. The CAP water is the cheapest water commodity that we have in our water resources portfolio, as compared to the CAGRd, which is just under $600 per acre-foot, very expensive water. This will ensure that, this water order will ensure that the city meets its groundwater replenishment obligation. Again, every gallon for gallon, we must replenish of the groundwater we're allowed to pump. And again, this will help enhance our long-term storage credit bank account. And with that, I know your surprise is a very short presentation. I'll answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Would anybody from the audience like to speak? Okay. Could I please have a motion in a second to approve the order of 7,229 acre-feet of water from the Central Arizona Project for calendar year 2015? Do I hear a motion? So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion from Councilman Campbell and a second by Councilman Stiff. Open for council discussion. Vice Mayor?
Just for clarity, the 1.2 million was not budgeted. Is that correct?
I'm going to let our finance director answer some of those questions. Thank you.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, and that's a very good question. It was not included in the budgeted expenditure amounts that we had. It was included in all of our modeling that built it. As you know, we have a very manual budget process. And 600,000 got moved from the CIP, was supposed to be moved over for a one-time purpose for the first 600,000. That didn't happen, so that went into cash instead of to an expenditure. The second half, the other 600,000, because the January 1 rate increase will not take effect till January, and the budget was adopted before, or put together beforehand, we didn't include that amount in the budget because the city council had not acted on it. Those two combined for the million, too.
So you have the cash, so now you need appropriation to be able to spend it. What would that appropriation transfer be from?
The appropriation transfer will come from the proposed improvement district funding that we have. The cash will come out of the Water Operations Fund.
For both?
For both of these.
Okay.
Councilman Stiff.
Mr. Holmes. Just, I think, a point for, you know, clarification is we're paying $166 an acre-foot. You mentioned CAGRd is 6 something?
Almost $600.
Yeah. And California water rates who take the rest of the water that we get from CAP is in the upper sevens, if I remember our last AMWAT presentation. I think 7, 70.
So 166.
$66 an acre-foot, while we're spending 1.2 is actually quite a bargain, especially for Colorado water.
That's a great point, Councilman Stiff. It is, we've enjoyed a long history of subsidized water rates. We're now seeing the water rates for the CAP climb, you know, higher than we normally have. The subsidy has primarily originated from the Navajo Generating Station, which was selling power on the market to help subsidize the water rate costs. So for a couple decades, we were enjoying very nice commodity costs. However, the energy market, as you're probably well aware, has significantly been reduced due to various fracking activities bringing down the cost of energy, which has affected the secondary market and affected the subsidy which was helping our water rate. So that's why you're seeing the increase. But to your point, Councilman Stiff, our water is still very reasonable. The CAP does a very, very good job at trying to keep the commodity costs down as low as they can be. And again, it's broken into several parts. It's energy to lift 1.5 million acre-feet from Lake Havasu City all the way to Tucson, and it's the operation, maintenance, and replacement costs of that 336-mile canal, which in total, again, was a $4.7 billion project back in the 70s. So they've done an excellent job at keeping the water commodity costs. And there's been some reserve funds that have been established through the years that are there to help with rate stabilization. So if they, if those were not in place, we'd probably even see higher cost increases from year to year.
And the second follow-up question to that was, you know, water has been really dominated the discussion in the media over the summer, particularly in early August before the storms. Did, are we on tap, I hate to use that pun, to get a water presentation on where we stand in the state?
Councilman Stiff, the city manager and I, we're going to be discussing that. I definitely, from a communication standpoint, want to come back. I think it's worthy to have the discussion. I know we've talked about it at AMWAT. You've heard presentations by the Director of the Department of Water Resources on Lake Mead, the upcoming potential future shortages that might be declared by the Secretary of Interior. And I definitely want to give you an update on where that could affect the city, and in particular, to our CAP water orders. And again, going back to the importance of our long-term storage credit bank account, which is our drought-proofing mechanism for the city. And I think that's worthy to come back to and address. And the city manager and I will definitely, as an agenda, get together and get back before you as probably a communication item.
And West Caps along with that?
Yes, I know you probably have seen the article in the Arizona Republic. Definitely want to get back with the basin study with the Bureau of Reclamation, and what the benefits of that would be for the City of Goodyear and the West Valley overall.
Right. Any other questions? All right, let's put it up front. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Well, we're all finished with our council meeting. Nice that you made it on time for the other one. We appreciate it. Okay, does the council have any comments or combinations, reports on current events? Yes, Councilman Stiff.
Well, Vice Mayor, myself, Councilmember Lortano, Councilmember Osborne, we're all at the Cal Ranch grand opening a couple of weeks ago. Cal Ranch?
Oh, Cal Ranch.
You were out of town. Councilmember, oh, that's right, sorry. Councilmember Holman was there. Councilmember Campbell was there the day before. So she didn't, she was shopping. She didn't cut the ribbon, she broke the bank, I think, is what.
She spent so much money.
I spent so much money, it was okay.
So, that was a, it was great to see the number of folks come out. It was also great to see that business, as it, we had no idea what it was going to look like, what it was going to be, where there was a lot of, I don't want to say controversy, but I think it was controversy about, about Cal Ranch coming into the community, and what it was going to do to the face of that shopping center. So it was really good to see, to see it in real terms, and what they, the kinds of things that they offer there and whatnot. I'm always confused at this part of the meeting, as I read through this part. Is this where we get to ask the manager something? Or is that coming around, too?
Let's do this first, and we'll bring it back.
Okay. And I'm going to let someone else talk about the pancake breakfast, but.
Okay. Who else wants? Councilman Campbell?
This past Friday, Councilmember Osborne and I attended the Arizona Leadership Forum 2014. And it was an amazing gathering of probably almost 1,000 of us together to talk about how Arizona is going to be moving forward, and what we, as citizens, as council members, as businessmen, developers, residents, all come together to get the Arizona we want. And it was very enjoyable. And you learn something different every time you go to an event like this. And the networking is just unbelievable. We, I went to this last year, and there were probably five of us elected officials in the room. This year, we had 40 of us. And it was wonderful because they were also from our, a couple of our congressmen were there, as well as our city officials from Phoenix. And it was just very enjoyable. And someone else can talk about the pancake breakfast.
Okay. Vice Mayor?
All right, I'll talk about the pancake breakfast. Great turnout. I know when we were in there, that, I believe, everybody was at the pancake breakfast, if I recall. Every table was taken inside that room. So, I mean, it was a great turnout. I don't know how much money you might have collected from the booth there, but I know it was a great turnout, great event. Also, just to piggyback on Cal Ranch, one thing that was nice to hear from the owners that they were very appreciative of the effort of staff towards that process of getting them open. So kudos to staff of working with them, good job. Also, was recently at a new public, or a new private school, Christian Stroh there at, was it Canyon? No, it was at Sareville and Van Buren. And they were also very appreciative and gave kudos to staff. They were on a very, very tight schedule, and they appreciate what staff did to help them make those deadlines. So again, thank you for, you know, working with them and getting their up. So again, two events I was at had praise for staff and the business-friendly atmosphere. So please keep that up. That's what we really want to see, you know, out there in our community. And again, tip of the hat to you all because they had some nice things to say about you. Thank you.
Anybody else? Well, I want to, first of all, thank the Vice Mayor for attending and taking my place for the last, I guess it was gone about 10 days. I really needed the break. I didn't think I did, and it's greatly appreciated. And counsel, thank you for covering all those events, and thank you for telling me where I was. I wonder why the mayor wasn't with you on that. So I genuinely appreciate it. I want to mention something I went today. And you know, we always forget that we have some very famous people in our city. And today, I was at Marilyn Smith's LPGA Charity Pro-Am.
Golf tournament.
Yes. And she holds that charitable one every year. And she does scholarships for young people that want to, that are interested in golf. They may want to go professionally, and they may not. I think last year, they made $84,000. But this year, it's probably going to be far more than that because they had one contribution of $40,000.
Wonderful.
Something like that. But I want to point out, and this is kind of, I'm going to be sort of talking to the women for just a moment, but there were women in the past that made great inroads. And I always said my mother did. When she ran for the House of Representatives, when nobody was running as a woman in the state of Michigan. So I kind of recognized that at the beginning. But these ladies broke into a man's spork, and it was very difficult for them. And there's a great number of them still living that were there at the very beginning. And Marilyn Smith is one of them, and she lives in Pebble Creek in our community. And today, they had all of these celebrities there from the golf world. And it was pretty impressive. And there, there's probably going to be a feature on them put out publicly. They're working on that now, that will be on television and on all the internet. So anyway, just, I'm going to put this in the office. I did get the autograph of the two individuals that started this. And if you look at this, it's a well-done publication because this time, the PGA did it. So it has lots of history and lots of information. So again, yes.
Marilyn was one of 13 women that started the LPGA. And we're so honored to have her in Goodyear, and to have her be such a wonderful community partner. This is the first year I did not play because I had another commitment. And I'm so sorry I missed it because it's, they actually have members of the LPGA who are reigning professionals now come in and play in our city. And it's quite an honor for Goodyear to host them. Marilyn was the golf pro at the Dallas Country Club for many, many years, and raised a huge amount of money for scholarships for young women who want to go play golf at college. And when she moved, she moved to Pebble Creek because she has a sister who was already here. And we're just so happy that she decided to come here. And as soon as she came, she started her golf tournament. And the first tournament we had, I think we had probably 130 of us out there, maybe 120. And it's just grown leaps and bounds now. And it, and they sell out within of the first week when they put the pairings out, because everyone wants to be there. It's just, it's just an amazing piece of history to think, I can play with a golf professional because there's an LPGA professional on every team. It's just, you see it on TV. I mean, this is the real deal.
Well, Buckeye, city manager, was there playing with them.
Oh, was he?
Yeah. Quite a man, quite a number of men played in this tournament.
Oh, my gosh.
And I said, did you hold your head up high? I mean.
It's amazing.
So he didn't do badly. So anyway, just wanted to bring that up. And just, we do have some very renowned people in the area, and we need to bring it forth and talk about it every now and then, and give them the credit. So anything else? All right, then, I think, Bill, you?
I didn't.
You want to do yours before the city manager has a report? Does that?
Yeah, that sounds fine. So I learned about this new thing tonight called a staff-initiated event. And I'm wondering if it's possible for us to take a staff-initiated attempt at correcting what we did to Cal Ranch by imposing some restriction in their screening and around the front corral, et cetera. Every member of their leadership team, from the president all the way down through the store manager, expressed their frustration at the type of screening that we required, and the height in which we limited their ability to display their material. And as, as I said earlier, and as I said that day, once you see it actually up and in place, perhaps things are different. And we've, I've inquired of staff what that would take. And it would take them to apply, them to pay the fee, them to move forward. And I think if it's something that we did, perhaps that's something that we can do that is staff-initiated, if that's even possible. So that's my question to the manager, and to see whether that is something that we might want to consider at a future meeting.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Stiff, I'm actually going to ask our interim Development Services Director to address that. There's been some communication that's gone on there. So if I could get Derek up here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. This is on? Okay, well, I'll talk loudly. Mayor Lord, Councilman Stiff, thank you very much. This came across my radar screen last week, and to the exact question about whether initiation, I would have to check into that. But we are discussing with their folks and different ideas how to address their issue. And then once we get something that we think is workable, we'll circle back around with the city manager and then we can all make sure we're on the same page with that. So we'll do the best we can to help our customer out.
Yeah, it was a big discussion we had on that, and there were some of us that thought it was absolutely not necessary. But I think once, you know, council, when you get together and you start discussing things like that, sometimes there are part of the council that doesn't really like the idea, so the rest of the council says, okay, I can go with that because we want Cal Ranch to go. And I think I remember that distinctly that night from it. And I think I had a little conversation with you, I think, Vice Mayor, about sometimes people, you know, women around homes all the time, they're always decorating, so women do have a vision that sometime, a number of men, it really sounds sexist and I'll probably get a lot of emails from this, but it does happen. And if you're not artistically prone or if you're not that way, you don't, you aren't able to visualize it in your head. And that's what happened that night. And because you weren't here and we had protesters of Cal Ranch. I was excited because I knew and saw the stats that when a Cal Ranch comes into a neighborhood, a retail neighborhood, it brings other retails in because they're so successful. But people did not believe us, okay? And we touted that, oh, that's Cal Ranch, that's heck, we're not going to have that in our city. So that discussion kind of rolled on. And so that evening, I think because of that, we want, I'm going to tell you as the mayor, I want to make sure that that got approved because we needed it. We need them. And so that's kind of how, now, what the mechanics of all this is to take that off, but it will be a lesson to our entire council.
Absolutely.
That when you make these decisions, it isn't so easy to take them back sometimes. And we're all guilty, and I'm just as guilty as anybody else in different things. So we want to be careful about what's important, what's worth it. We've got to, we've got to be more broad in our thinking when some of these buildings and developers come before it. So I think we're just looking at, okay, give us the mechanics of how we get this screen taken down. Because Ron and I drove by before I went on vacation, terrible. I kept saying, I said, can you believe this? It looks like somebody went out and pasted this thing on a beautiful fence. And so I wasn't happy with it. So anyway, I appreciate you bringing it up, Bill, and I appreciate you guys listening to them that day. I wasn't there, so let's get it taken care of. So however we can do it, let's make sure it's done right.
Well, Mayor, my concern was we were going to, you know, charge them a fee to.
Yeah.
That was the information that we got, was they have to pay the fee, they have to go through the process. And I thought, we impose this on them, and if we can initiate it without them doing a fee, without them paying a fee, I think that's the least we should try. And that was.
I agree.
Turn, yeah, are we out of, am I talking, am I not supposed to be talking about?
We're getting a little far field here. Yes, I would recommend we just bring it back at a later date.
That happens all the time with me, yes, I know. So I hold my mouth when I shouldn't do. So we'll say, what's new? Okay.
So can the later date be sooner than later?
Mayor and Councilmember Campbell, we are working through this. As soon as we have updates, we will inform council.
Okay, thank you.
This is absolutely a project we're working on right now.
And I will just say once more that we work for the public. And I know we have certain laws set up by whoever sets these laws up, magic sky comes down on us, but there are moments on this dais that we need to tell the truth to the people when it's happening, and we need to let them know we're concerned. So if I'm sort of breaking the law a little bit, I appreciate you remind me to hold back, but I don't regret.
I don't believe you broke the law. Let's just be clear on that, but.
Okay, all right.
We will bring it back later, though.
Just want you to know, I get very into these things and, just being fair. Okay, anything else from the council? Nobody else has? All right, city manager, do you have anything, any wise words for us?
Mayor, members of the council, nothing wise tonight? No, I actually did not have any updates for council at this time, so that's all for tonight from the manager.
All right, great. Well, then let's look at the next meeting. We have a work session on 9/29, a work session on 10/6, and a regular meeting on 10/6. So with that, meeting's adjourned.